Pardon that. Roll call.
Ermeling.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Mynell.
Here.
John.
Nope.
White.
Here.
Ziegler.
Here.
Any public comments at this time? Any public comments on social media and be their hand up? No need? What?
No hands up.
Okay, thank you. Our resolution is number four, Resolution two zero two one dash zero zero four, supporting WMCA Resolution two zero two one dash one requesting clerks, their staff and poll workers be included in vaccination group one B for the COVID-19 vaccination. Moved by Ermeling, second by Feeny. Anything on the question or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. New business. A knowledge plan commission approval of site plan for the building addition from the forest, FTF nine zero zero four progress way. It's your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling. Second by Feeny. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Number six, working session to discuss village board priorities for projects and policies to facilitate development. Presentation economic development and financial overview by Greg Johnson Ellers. Good evening Greg.
Good evening.
So, yeah, before Greg gets started, I guess I wasn't really sure what how this, well, you may want to conduct this meeting, but Greg did prepare slideshow or slide presentation that kind of goes over some overarching things relative to our TIP districts and how growth impacts this for our tax levy. You know, and other things of our options that we can look at is, you know, we consider development, whether it's in an island tip, but if you want him to just continue through his, go through his slideshow and then we open up the discussion later, or I guess we can, I'm sure you could entertain questions as you go too. So I don't know what your preference is Greg, if you want to entertain questions as you go.
That, I'm fine with that.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I know you have copies of the presentation, I have it up here on the screen as well. Really kind of the objectives this evening are kind of multiple, but really want to start with kind of providing an overview of the financial capacity within the villages two existing TIP districts. Both are in very good and stable financial condition. Really have the ability to consider accomplishing further objectives within the district boundaries. So I think, you know, discussing and prioritizing what some of the remaining objectives are for the district, I think is worthwhile for the village. And have some further discussion on how, you know, the village can continue to promote, you know, commercial, industrial, or business park investment in particular, utilizing those existing TIDs. And then also at the request of staff, I've kind of provided a general overview of various funding mechanisms that are available, you know, to fund investment outside of borrowing. So I can kind of provide some details on those tools and mechanisms, and then also provide just some general information about kind of net new construction and how growth kind of impacts the village's ability to fund not only infrastructure investment, but also in terms of impacting your overall budget. So I'll speak to that as well. In terms of just kind of TID District number one, I'm sure you're all familiar with kind of the general boundaries of the district, but we've kind of included here a slide that kind of shows the existing map of the district boundaries. Just to kind of familiarize yourself with the area that we're talking about. The TID boundaries kind of highlighted in pink on this slide. So when we talk about really the financial capacity of the district to undertake future projects, you know, this is really kind of the area which we're talking about within the current boundaries of TID District number one that reflect all of the amendments that have been approved over the years. Just some background information on TID District number one. The expenditure period for this district doesn't end until 2026. So there is still time remaining for the village to accomplish some of the projects that are identified in the project plans, you know, for eligible project costs within the district. The current increment value as of January first of 2020 is a little over 254 million of increment value that's been generated since the district was created. The original project plan and the subsequent amendments to the project plans for this district, you know, do provide the village with a fair amount of flexibility to fund a variety of project costs that range from core infrastructure, streets and utility improvements to land acquisition or development incentives. Just based off of kind of the current increment value of the district, the known project costs and remaining debt that's outstanding within the district. You know, the district would be in position to close, it's projected by 2023, unless the village decides to continue to undertake, you know, other project costs that were identified in the project plan. Here on the projected fund balance, this kind of shows, once we take into account just the current increment value, so no increases in increment value, it's kind of a conservative projection. And we subtract out, you know, the planned expenditures within the district for debt service, administrative costs and other obligations. This is the projected fund balance that's going to be available within the district. So as you can see, the district is going to, you know, continue to accumulate some significant cash and fund balance that can be used to pay for project costs, if that's the direction of the village going forward. So there certainly is an opportunity to leverage the funds within the TIP district to help undertake some of those permitted project expenses and utilize the TIP district to pay for those as opposed to the village, you know, undertaking those costs, you know, separately and paying for those costs explicitly on their own by partnering through the TIP district with the other taxing jurisdictions. You know, that increment that's collected and continues to accumulate can be used to pay for those project costs. So it certainly is kind of a key financial opportunity for the village to kind of decide if it wants to undertake some of those projects that have been identified in the project plan.
Could I ask a question there?
Yes.
On that projected closure date, if we don't take on projects, is that $15 million? That's indicated to be in the fund balance at that point in time. Is that, will it still be needed to pay off any outstanding debt yet that's out there to be repaid?
Yeah, the, we're projecting that by 2023, without even any further growth within the district, this fund balance would be sufficient, you know, to pay off the remaining debt that's outstanding. So I mean, you're still going to have cash that's available for you to work with, you know, to kind of, you know, this is kind of the cumulative amount that's going to be accumulating going forward that takes into account annual debt service payment. So this is, this is the remaining cash that's going to be available. So if, you know, the expenditure period goes until 2026. If you have eligible project costs that are identified in the project plan that aren't yet completed by the time the expenditure period ends and you have some cash that's available within the fund balance of the district. If you deposit those monies into an escrow account and identify explicitly which projects in the project plan you're going to continue to complete past the end of the expenditure period. That deposit of the cash into the escrow prior to the end of the expenditure period is the formal expenditure of the TID funds. So you can continue to draw down on that cash past 2026, but it all has to be deposited into an earmarked escrow account where you're identifying explicitly what remaining projects you're going to complete, and then you can draw those funds, you know, past the end of the expenditure period. So that's, that's also a tool that's available, you know, to the village as that expenditure period approaches.
Okay, thanks.
So in terms of some of the land use objectives, this was a map that was kind of taken from the last project plan amendment for TID District number one. Then it had to kind of identified some of the, you know, key corridors and areas within the district boundaries, you know, that were identified for kind of future, you know, development within the village. As you can see, there was really an emphasis kind of placed on commercial, business park and industrial or combinations of those, of those uses. So, you know, I think certainly that was a big part of the objective of doing that project plan amendment a few years back that was permitted under the special legislation that the village obtained. And so, you know, when you're looking at those, you know, those project costs that were identified in the most recent project plan and even prior project plans, you know, that's really where a lot of the emphasis was placed, was, you know, what kind of infrastructure is going to be necessary to have that, this form of development materialize? You know, are there development incentives that may be necessary to provide to developers to have this type of development materialize? You know, that was really kind of the primary objectives that were identified in the TID project plan for land use objectives. So as you, as the TID is now kind of generating some significant cash, you know, it's, you have resources available to kind of put towards this use of kind of broader commercial and industrial and business park expansion and other objectives of the TID, but that certainly was one of the primary objectives. So I think in terms of kind of some policy decisions, kind of for the village to, I think, kind of, you know, in my opinion, kind of focus on here, you know, kind of going forward is, you know, there are six years left remaining on that expenditure period. You know, the district is in position that has cash that you can fund some significant improvements, you know, and kind of looking at, you know, some of the projects that were identified in the project plans. You know, should there be some existing improvements made within existing corridors? You know, focus on new targeted areas for underdeveloped or developed areas or both. And really, you know, how should, you know, the village, you know, potentially leverage that financial flexibility that's within the TID district and the project plan to kind of accomplish some of these higher economic development priorities? Again, by using the TID and those, those funds to particularly find infrastructure or other objectives, you know, you're really partnering with the other taxing jurisdictions and utilizing, you know, the tax revenue that's been generated on that new development, both from the village and the other jurisdictions to help pay for those costs, you know, compared to broader general infrastructure needs of the village, which will, you know, fall solely to the village to, to fund and accomplish. So, you know, I think the, the good news here is that there's certainly some financial horsepower behind TID District number one at this time. It's really about kind of prioritizing, you know, are there other investments that the the village wants to see within that district and how best to put those funds to use? So it's, it's certainly an opportunity that's available to you if you, if you decide it's, it's the direction the village wants to pursue.
Was that a question we want to come back to later? Just to move up in order, do you want to? A little bit now, I guess it's up to you in terms of what we are maybe doing as priorities. Again, we can come back to it later as well.
Yeah, Lauren?
I have a question, well, it's in my mind, so if we don't fund additional project, the projected to close in 2023, that's early, correct Greg?
That is early, correct. The TID collects increment until 2031.
So, that would include paying off our TID debt that we financed, refinanced some years back?
That is correct.
Okay. And in effect, if we do nothing with this TID, don't expend any monies, which I don't think is correct. This increment comes back to all the taxing jurisdiction, correct?
That is correct. By statute, you know, if the TID district reaches a point where it is accumulated enough funds that you can, you know, pay off your remaining debt outstanding and you've completed your projects, it's, you know, required by statute to close. So there, you do have the authority to undertake other projects within the district. But that's really kind of the, the policy question here that we're talking about is the, the district does need to remain open for a couple more years just to cover existing debt, even if, you know, nothing else is undertaken. So, yeah, but that's, yes, once the district closes, all that increment value then returns to the tax role benefiting the village and all the other taxing jurisdictions.
A follow-up question, as an example, we've been talking about the Western Corridor plan. Those, that, the infrastructure, the road, the sewer, the water, all the utilities, that could be financed. And that would tie those funds up until if we had a, we took out a five-year note to do that, or we, or would you pay with the reserves that are in the TID?
I think initially, I think if we kind of have like kind of a prioritized list of the remaining projects that the village wants to accomplish and the timing of those, I think certainly first we would look at putting the cash to work. Why borrow if you don't have to? But if, you know, there's not enough cash to fund all the projects within the timeframe that's identified, you could supplement that with some, some financing as well, you know, that, and under the theory that the increment value would be sufficient to cover those. So that would be part of what we would review in the analysis.
Thank you. Pardon?
Yeah, I guess my thought was on the same thing about, we're talking about the Western Corridor. I think we should, I hope we're working on getting things going on that because this is the time to do it, or we'll never get it done. I think it will enhance the taxing. Weston Avenue was not really a very good road for much of anything.
We received that packet on planning, should we send that same packet out to the board too?
They all got it.
Oh, they did? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I see where it's in there, but I mean, I'm just wondering if you are going to, you know, get going on it or drag or feed?
Right.
It's, so the Weston Avenue we just received, and the staff is looking at it right now. The plan would be to bring both of them and reintroduce them to basically public works and planning commission in March at a dual meeting. And then start the public hearing process, which, because they're being adopted into the comp plan, probably won't happen until April or May, depending on if we have a special meeting or not for it. Because there's different requirements for the number of days.
We kind of, I mean, I know there's plans in there, but how we, do we know what we want to put in there?
We have a final draft.
We have a tentative, you know, yes, mostly, right.
Yeah.
Because like I said, so often things kind of drag along and pretty soon you're racing around.
Yeah, this one is, is on track. It's only about a month off.
Yep.
And that was just because it took two meetings to talk about transport ways.
Drop something, right underneath your foot. Underneath your right foot.
Yes, that's on it.
Oh, I just, if it's breakable, I didn't want you to break it.
Thank you, sir.
He stepped on it.
Yeah, he did, okay. All right.
Okay. So, so I am hearing, this is our view from staff as well, that we want to prioritize Weston Avenue because we have the opportunity to use, utilize our TIP capacity, get this done, and I don't think it would get done otherwise.
Right, right.
That definitely fits the but four.
Yes.
Yes, so. The other question, and again, we can comment this later, I know we're probably getting Greg a little bit off track potentially, but you know, we're, we would certainly be able to bring an engineering firm on to start doing some preliminary work related to the Weston Avenue corridor, you know, even prior to the plan being adopted, and then some of the details can be filled in. So, we can talk about that a little bit later or at the next, at our next meeting if you like, but you know, we, staff agrees and we see this as the opportunity, we should promote this as, as say the number one priority now because Campbell Center has gone bye-bye and this is where we should focus our resources.
Along with, you know, Schofield Avenue, there's some projects probably coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So they're, they'll both come out, that one is pretty, that's done, that has, is in final.
So that'll come, you'll be covering some things that TIP two here after this, so.
Any more? Any more questions? John, Nate, Bart, Steve?
No.
All right.
We'll move next to TID District number two. So this map kind of just shows the existing boundaries of TID District number two. Certainly encompasses a lot of the Schofield Avenue corridor. So this is just kind of included for, for reference in terms of the, the boundary of this existing district. In terms of, you know, the particulars for this TID district, the expenditure period ends in 2026 as well. The current increment value is a little over 26 million. This district is continuing to, you know, build up a fund balance that could be used for project costs as well. If no additional project costs are incurred, this district is in position to close. This plan, the district plan and the project plans that were, or project plan costs that were identified, the most recent version that, that I had on file from the village was from 2006. And so while there's still time left on the expenditure period, I think the appropriate question is, you know, is there additional investment that's needed, you know, within this district as well? And, you know, given the fact that the project plan was, if the last amendment was in 2006, you know, should a final project plan amendment be prepared to identify the remaining projects that the village wants to undertake within this district? And just get approval from the, the joint review board and others to undertake those final projects? Just under the theory that, you know, proceeding with projects, you know, now in 21 through 26 and kind of relying on a plan and expenditure authority that was last granted in 2006, that's a fair amount of time that has lapsed. So, you know, while there's still expenditure period left, it may be appropriate to prioritize and identify remaining projects here for this district and possibly amend the plan just to update the expenditure authority within the district. So similar, you know, this district is, you know, is has enough money to pay off its debt, so it's going to continue to, you know, build a fund balance as well. It's, you know, nowhere near to the extent that it is in, in TID District number one. But same general theory applies, the, the district has paid for its current costs. And so, you know, current increment value and potential other value within the district could support some additional project costs. So kind of same general, general question, you know, are there other objectives that the village is looking to accomplish within the boundaries of the district?
Lauren?
Greg, this is Lauren, I have a question. You talk and you're in a slide about, should the final project plan amendment be considered? Do we have the ability to do that, or would it take special legislation like TID two took or TID one took?
You have the ability to do a project plan amendment, which basically updates the project costs and the permitted projects you could undertake within the district. What you cannot do is do a boundary amendment by adding territory to the district because you are over the 12% limit. You know, that's prescribed by statute, the increment value of TID one and two exceeds 12% of the village's total equalized value. The special legislation that was obtained for TID one gave the village kind of a one-time exception to do a boundary amendment for TID one, even though the village was over the 12% test. That was implemented a few years back. So you can't add territory to the district without, to TID two, without first subtracting a significant amount of value for TID District number one, which would just financially harm TID one. So you can amend it, undertake more projects, just not add more territory.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Okay, any more questions?
I guess, yeah, I wish in, in District two, I don't know how or whatever, but I just wish we could make it look better. I mean, you know, it just, to me, driving through there and all the you know, vacant land and the, it just is not to me a very attractive. I don't care if you got the median strip in there or not, that looks better, but you know, it, it just, and I wish we could do something. And I don't like necessarily, and I know it sounds counterproductive, but buying properties just, you know, but gosh, I don't know, if you can give some TID money to get people to fix it up or do something with it, or I don't know. But I, I, I just think while we have this money in there, we should try and make it look nicer.
Lauren?
In the, in the past, this, this particular TID has been identified as several small lots that have the potential of being combined and being useful as, in a commercial way, mixed-use or mixed-retail residential combination. But some of the lots are so small, you would have to acquire several of them to make the lot large enough to be useful for that purpose. So I would imagine that, that funds could be used to do that. I don't know if it's possible or not, if that's kind of stretching the limits of the purpose of TID. I think we.
Yeah, that's what it would be for. So right now, you've got the Schofield Avenue Corridor Plan. So once that gets adopted, the original scope of the project was actually to then do a project plan amendment. So the idea was to start spurring some of that development or helping it. And that was something that at one point we had talked about with the CDA because they had the ability that when, you know, lots came up for sale, like there's a few of them there, you could, the, the village could purchase them with the money. And then basically turn them into greenfields or even help people with removing some of the homes off of there, because that tends to be the problem, is they can go out to a different spot that's green because it's more expensive to move that house off of there or that building. So the funds could also be used for, for that, for helping, you know, basically create a greenfield for them again.
So if a business came in and said, well, I'm kind of interested in this area, but the cost of moving the house and, and doing whatever is more than we could help with that, is that what you're, that's part of the business?
Again, I think that would be where the project plan amendment comes in because I doubt that the original.
The original, I think, was basically for facade upgrades, things like that, and the original landscaping. So that's why we were doing the plan to kind of determine what types of uses could happen along there, what we should look for, for development. And then once that was approved, then go in and update that project plan because like Greg said, it's from 2006.
And just as another thought is, if I remember correctly, where the TID now district ends, we've got enough that we can do some improvement beyond that? Because it's bordering or it's what it was within a so many miles or?
Yes, within the half mile. And the actual corridor plan, when we looked at it, goes actually all the way up to Ryan Street.
It does, okay. I think I heard that once before.
Goes to Ryan just because, you know, we have that other tip there too.
Right, okay.
But it looked at the whole corridor, because that's kind of where we figured development would kind of go to, which is what's kind of happening right now.
Yeah, because, you know, I just, like I said, I just, sometimes I look at it as a visitor to the area and I just think, how unattractive is this? I mean, I just.
Well, you know, in my, and I, I share your view. You know, since 1980, when I moved here and, you know, working in the stores and, you know, Target was an outdoor theater. You know, I rented a house, a basement right behind it. But lane northwest has been that way for the entire 41 years, you know, and
As long as I've been here.
And, and, you know, you drive this corridor, then you drive the corridor, if you hang a left at the log cabin, which used to be, you know, perpendicular, and, and drive out towards Rothschild, it's that same look. Then come back to Log Cabin again, go down Grand Avenue. And honestly, I mean, we all have the same look.
Right.
And what's helping right now in the last 10 years is that there's six or seven UPS and FedEx trucks driving in my little street every day, when it used to be one or two a week. So how do you put buildings and brick and mortar there? You know, really, the, the stuff that's going to happen is kind of the stuff that like Tynan Cellar, you know, Raleigh Lockery, you know, with a, a building underneath, something that's, you know, that's kind of a hybrid, but then with, with housing above, you got to almost create the bodies right there, you know? And if you start getting that housing going, and I got to tell you, I don't look at lane northwest anymore, that's kind of odd, but I don't. But I look at the Tynan Sellers, you know, I look at the, you know, the bricks and I can't believe how many cars are there. And I, I go around and I, I see, you know, the, the new brickners, you know? There's not a whole lot on Grand Avenue. I was so excited when the Harley Davidson went in there and then a furniture store, and then now it's RE/MAX and, or the Island Apartments, you know? I thought that was so neat when it was right on the water there. It, it's just amazing how this takes so long. It really does, you know, I mean, look at what we're dealing with. It really does, you know. I mean, look at what we're dealing with tonight yet again with the pond. That pond since the highway, it's been sitting there, just nothing. And and we got it right in our hand right now, you know, so. I I I I heard so much scuttlebutt when we were doing the business part, that there's not a chance in hell it's going to go, you know. I I remember my father-in-law, God bless his soul, my first father-in-law, and how there's no way we're gonna, you know, it's gonna be up in eyeballs. Oh, my gosh, what a success, you know, what a success, so.
It didn't go as fast as planned.
No, but.
Eventually filmed.
But holy mackerel, you know, look at some of those buildings there. It's unbelievable, you know, the two-bed, two, bending out there, Tom's place. You know, but then you can go by Clux. It's only open two days a week, you know. I don't know, you know, I I actually struggle mostly with those three roads is all the wires that are everywhere that nobody sees. We can accept all, you know, we have such a problem with some things, but you look at the wires and the coast, it's just acceptable. It's graffiti on it, it's graffiti on a train car.
About it for years.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, one time I, I, I asked a guy from WPSY, he couldn't bury him.
Yeah.
And boy, did I get a lecture.
Yeah, it it just takes so much time. I mean, look at when we bought the the Bear Breverage for EMPD, you know. And now finally, after all these years, look at this nineteen fifty-six, fifty-three, finally, you know, so. It's pretty wild. Yeah.
I think this, this, this TID two is probably one of those places where we want to get, you talked about plan unit development, where you have mixed uses, you have commercial, we take small-scale retail, because let's face it, the area of big box dead.
Yes, it is.
If it's not, it's on its last leg.
Yeah.
Where you have small, uh, small shops, businesses, and then rental property above, because that, despite the fact that people want to have single-family homes around here, it's, it's not going to work anymore, because that's my generation's idea of, you know, half acre with lawn and, but a lot of younger people don't look at it that way anymore.
They want to be more transient. They don't want to be tied down. They, they certainly don't want to come home and give any, any thought to having to cut the lawn or manicure or landscape or paint again. They want to, you know, they got a credit card in their hand, they want to have fun, you know, they looking towards the weekend or nights and.
That's kind of sounds like we're condemning younger people, don't we not?
I'm not, no, I'm not. It's, it's often I question myself, have I done this right? Have I worked too hard? Have I cared too much? Have I been too loyal? I should have, you know, not given a crap and, you know, bought a boat snowmobile and a four-wheeler right away, you know.
Party hardy.
Who knows, you know. Yes, YouTube?
Just. I don't know if I'd liked them at Harley.
Yeah.
I knew somebody that got one and I was.
Glad I don't have one.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
So anyway.
Lauren has two motorcycles.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah, any Harley, so.
I'm sorry. I had two. Yeah.
I guess, just talking about TIF two and some of these, and repackaging some of these lots, we do know that there's some interest in this right now.
Yep.
That we are going to be meeting with a developer on in the near future. I know the, uh, the former Green Acres.
Alpine.
Alpine, true.
Yep.
Alpine Mobile Home is one of those redevelopment areas opportunities, and and there's another in in that same vicinity, a little bit farther west. So I think that those are two things that we know are kind of on the horizon, and we should be hearing or expecting to hear something about those very shortly. I guess a couple of things that made me a question, but to go back to Greg would be, you know, I, we talk about buying land. I don't know how aggressive the board really wants us to be in looking at land.
I'm not sure either.
It's come up before, where we maybe had some opportunity to try to maybe tie some things up, but then we end up holding it for a long time, would be one thing. Maybe the question to Greg is that what his experience might be, or his knowledge of what other communities do along these lines. You know, I, just as a point of information, again, what's right for us is what's right for us or what we choose to do, obviously. And then with respect to the stuff that's, you know, where we have proposals for development that that are outside either TID one or TID two Congress, we do have some constraints on how that money might be spent. We can't just spend it on anything, right? It has to be something that benefits either TID one or TID two or fourth or whatever the case may be, correct?
That, that's correct. I mean, if you, if your TID project plans have projects that are identified that fall within that half-mile radius of the TID boundary, you know, you can expend TID funds on a project if it's within that geographical area. But there needs to be some, you know, benefit to the TID district, either in full or, you know, a proportional benefit to a TID district. I mean, if it's, you know, an infrastructure project, like a street project, and it's within that half-mile radius, you know, you have to be able to demonstrate what the benefit is to the TID. If it benefits the TID and other areas outside of the district, then you split the cost between the TID and the non-TID areas. So, yeah, you can expend funds, but there still has to be some benefit to the district if it's outside the boundary.
Can you give some examples of that, please?
I don't think you heard Steve.
Greg?
Oh, Greg, Steve Manal asked if you could give some examples of that, Greg.
Of the half-mile radius and how that can.
What, what would benefit the TIF or the, the TID district as opposed to stuff that would have to be split between the two?
Yeah, I mean, it's, the, the determination is made on a, on a project-by-project basis. So I mean, if you, let's say you're improving a, a road that kind of leads into the TIF district, and it's not all encompassed within the boundary of the district. You know, if it's, if the property that's outside, or the part of the road, excuse me, that's outside the TID boundary is leading into the district, and you're improving the rest of the road that is within the boundary of the district, and you're just trying to kind of establish some continuity, you know, that covers that whole scope of the project, you could probably make a realistic argument that, you know, that portion of the road that's just outside the boundary of the district is accomplishing the overall objective of the district plan by improving that, improving that corridor. So you may be able to charge, you know, all of that road cost to the TID district, you know. If it's servicing, if there's, you know, some offshoots from that road improvement that are going to benefit land that's going to be developed outside the TID, then maybe you need to proportionally split the cost. I mean, that's, that's an example, but I mean, I think you, you have to kind of make that finding on, on each project.
Your question? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Um, I I I just, I'm going to just go back a little bit on my storytelling. It's, it's also, we, we seem to forget a little bit, and I'm sure John will jump in on this. Target. And and initially, Target probably didn't think they, they really went there because they thought more stuff was going to go there, and everything went over out in Ramon, but this target is damn successful, and they've done two remodels since they've been there. We also have the largest grocery store volume in the entire area other than than Walmart. So independently, this Pick 'n Save is number one. And it used to be, it used to be the Triggs, which used to be twenty-nine and Wausau, that was number one, that was the granddaddy. Then County Market came in. And then this one, and actually, when I was at this one, we were doing a little bit over a million a week. But this thing here is doing about eight, eight fifty a week, and it's number one. So I mean, that's, you know, we've got, we go buy that every day, and, you know, the cars are jammed in there, targets happening. You know, and we got other buildings, so, you know, and I, but I sometimes focus on the Lane Northwest, you know, that, and and LaPorte's Corner that we thought was going to get developed and.
Yeah.
Some of those other ones.
Why wouldn't we buy that?
Which one? LaPorte's?
Either or.
See, now, I, I, that's a question I want to ask Greg and and the rest of you. Do we feel that it's a priority? Do we go after the eighty acres out on, on Weston? But, or is that going to get taken by somebody? Do we take these small ones here, and will we be more successful and the look of these small ones? You know, if we do more of the small ones, is somebody like a Raleigh Lockery feeling better and saying, boy, this, they're going, I'm going to keep going with this kind of stuff? I don't know. I'm asking a question. Barb had her's up first.
Yeah, I mean, I know different, well, since when they were looking, they would look at some of these lots and they were interested in them, but then they had to tear down the building.
Yeah.
Or they had to, and by the time they got through with all of that, they, you know, it, it just isn't cost-effective most of the time. I know some, you sometimes will, if that's the location you really, really truly want.
Can you, can you imagine, right, the, the look of LaPorte's if that was cleared and ready to go? Holy mackerel, were you going thumbs up or her turn? I, I, you went like that.
Yes, well, you know, I think there are vacant land that we have, essentially vacant, I think developers aren't interested in that because it's,
Yeah.
they don't have to tear down a building, but the harder parts are the parts where you have buildings, and you have small lots, where for a developer to come in and buy several lots, tear building downs and and put in infrastructure, that makes it more difficult. That's why everybody wants to go out in the middle of eighty acres with nothing but green and trees. And and I think that's part of a TID and a TIF is to help do the infilling.
He's afraid.
Part of the cost.
Yeah. Keith or?
So.
Lauren, Mark, go ahead.
But you mentioned two parcels or three, I, I like two at least, that are actually outside the boundaries of TID. The LaPorte property is outside the boundary of TID two.
No, so the LaPorte property has an issue because they actually own three lots.
Three, or all three, yeah.
And so one of them, I mean, you can do it with creative, I mean, the, the, the person that was looking at it had it so that it worked. I mean, we had it, they just decided that they weren't going there. So it's doable, but it doesn't allow us to combine them together, so you have to keep one outside the TID district and the other inside, so you can't strata lot lines, things like that. But they can share parking, they just have to get a little creative.
You know, I, I was excited that it was going to get built. I wasn't excited for what was going there. And and now hearing that right across the street, they're going to bust out all three walls and expand that QuickTrip. I mean, that's pretty wild, you know, they, they don't, they don't rest. And in Rothschild, I think they bought LeBachtons, Lee Bachtons. And I think something's going to happen there with, you know, probably a work. But they are a machine.
Bach and Soss, isn't it?
Yeah, that's ours.
The Bach is us.
Is us?
So the next order, the one on Business Fifty-One?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's us.
That's all us, yeah.
Yeah.
I know. It goes all the way down to Triggs, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, I, I mean, we heard that, right?
Yeah, they're looking, yes, they're looking at.
And the one on Schofield, you know, Schofield and Birch, I mean, they've got.
They actually are doing the one down here too now.
They are. Wow.
Yeah, we just got plans for.
Wow, that's exciting.
Talking about that the other day.
And and the one up on the highway is way under the kill.
They're expanding the kitchen areas out there for their use.
So I mean, it's, it's, we've got a lot of stuff happening, you know, and, uh, anyway.
So I just want to make one comment about the Schofield Avenue plan. The idea behind that is the mixed use, and the biggest thing was to put the people there and keep Target and Pick 'n Save. And because when we even first started it, we were talking about putting a whole bunch of stuff out and moving things out onto, to Camp Phillips. But the whole idea was to keep that business district, and we needed to have the people there. So when you see the, the plan, it's going to have those mixed uses.
You know, like Barbara Con, Community Center Drive, I mean, that stuff was all built in the early two thousand, so. I mean, that stuff's not at a point where it needs to be replaced.
Okay.
Look, Greg, where are you right now?
I was, uh, depending on the year, either just graduated high school or early college.
Yeah.
Not everybody can have gray hair there, Steve.
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry, you broke it? No, that was your good one.
Because if, if there is, if there's a need and an opportunity, then, you know, if, if it means doing things a couple of years ahead of schedule, well, we, the, uh, we could take advantage of the TID to overhaul that if need be.
Well, I guess that's my thought. I, I would hate to see this closed when we got so much stuff that we could use it for to improve that area. I mean, I, I just, I mean, I don't, I've never been particularly a fan of just, well, like our neighbor, keeping spending and keeping them, you know, just taking money from this one to do this and this. But where it is something like this, where we can actually improve the area that the TID is in and and the surrounding area, I think we really should look at that.
So I guess I was thinking of TID one, I mean, TID two along Schofield Ave, I guess, I know there probably are maybe some interceptor sewers or something that, you know, potentially would fit, but we'd have to look at that.
There again would be a matter of what the project plan described, the eligible cost, so there, I guess, you know, we can look at that. But time is running out too. What, you know, what, what's available to accomplish projects that too, so.
How long does it take to amend our plan?
Project plan amendment?
Yeah.
It's a matter of, I guess, putting a list of projects together and does that have to be, that's be, maybe Greg, you can speak to that. What's the process to amend the project plan?
Yeah, the, the process itself, I mean, once you have your project costs identified and kind of all the background information done, the, the legal process to amend the plan can be accomplished in less than ninety days. There needs to be an initial meeting of the Joint Review Board, a, a public hearing either before the Plan Commission or the CDA, then Village Board action, and then it goes back to the Joint Review Board for final consideration. And those meetings can be consolidated a little more for an amendment compared to a TID creation. So it's really, once you get the, kind of the priorities established and the documentation prepared, the process can, can be done fairly, fairly quickly.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So.
So I think next, I'm just going to kind of speak to just identify kind of general tools that are kind of available that can be used even, you know, in conjunction with, with TIF districts or or outside of TIFs for some of these. So obviously, we've been spending a lot of time talking about your TIF districts. As I've mentioned, you know, the main benefit of a TID is that, you know, you're sharing the, partnering with the other taxing jurisdictions and paying for the, those projects as opposed to them being solely borne by, by the village. You know, a tool that I know the village is starting to use, you know, more often, and it, you know, can be used through TIF districts in particular is called the pay-as-you-go approach, where you're shifting more of the financial risk onto the developer, where they're funding, you know, costs upfront, and then they are getting reimbursed from tax increment that's generated from their particular project. So instead of the village funding improvements upfront and taking on more of that, you know, financial burden and financial risk, the developer is, is paying for those costs and only gets reimbursed to the extent that they generate sufficient increment. I think there's been a, you know, the pendulum has really swung over the years to, you know, things being done more on a pay-as-you-go basis, mainly because, you know, communities are, you know, trying to balance, you know, the need for promoting economic development, but also, you know, maintaining an existing core infrastructure. And, you know, there's limits in terms of, you know, certainly borrowing and just what communities can undertake through their own financial capacity. So, you know, through TIFs in particular, there's been a lot more utilization of pay-as-you-go, or the developer is funding that and gets reimbursed directly. So just some other kind of revenue options that are available. You know, this can be done with, you know, outside TIDs or within TIDs. Special assessments, you can place a lien on a property that has a benefit, you know, to what is being financed. And you have a special assessment lien that is collected on an annual basis that could be used to help, you know, reimburse project costs if those are funded, you know, through some, some means on the front end, the special assessments can reimburse it. Or if you have debt issued, you can use special assessment revenue to repay the debt service. There is a form of debt that can be issued under state statutes. It's called a special assessment B bond. It's a form of revenue debt. It doesn't count towards the village's general obligation debt limit. The legal security to repay the debt is a special assessment. So the timing of development's a key consideration if you're going to issue special assessment bonds, because the underwriters that are purchasing. Uh, so the timing of development's a key consideration if you're going to issue, uh, special assessment bonds, because the underwriters that are purchasing those bonds, you know, want reasonable assurances that those special assessments are going to be collected, uh, meaning that the development is actually going to proceed. And so there's, you know, something to levy the special assessment on. Um, you know, if that development's going to be delayed or the assessment's going to be deferred, you know, then that legal revenue stream to repay the debt isn't, you know, immediately available. So there, you know, there needs to be a generally a project that's, you know, going to materialize, that, you know, can repay the special assessments uh, to back that special assessment B bond. Um, you can also use special assessments to repay, uh, general obligation debt service, uh, but same kind of caution applies. Um, you know, if that revenue isn't collected or the development gets delayed or the assessment's deferred, uh, that debt service is gonna have to be repaid by another, uh, source. There's also, uh, utility connection charges, um, you can have sewer connection charges that are, you know, charged to a customer at the time that they're connected to the sewer utility system, um, you know, to help generate revenue to offset, uh, sewer extension charges. Um, while, you know, water connection charges, you know, can exist, those are regulated just like everything else with the water utility through the Public Service Commission. Uh, they generally prefer that capital expenditures be built into your water rates, uh, versus a separate connection charge. So the the PSC isn't really, uh, favorable of water connection charges on the sewer side, since that's non-regulated uh, by the PSC, that's more at the discretion of the of the village board.
Greg, I'm just curious, um, if you had some examples where the sewer connection charges are used, I mean, we just crossed, there are going to be crossing the river. And there's a, there's a tremendous amount of land out there that's currently being farmed. Do you assess it, or do you figure out, you know, how many acres it is? Or how do they come up with a fair value for those properties when you're assessing? You know, the the, the cost benefit of of installing, I mean, I I'm just curious on some examples of what, how we might structure something like that. If somebody has twenty acres over there, obviously, it's different than somebody that's on a five acre home.
No, that that's that's correct. And I mean, if you're doing a special assessment or you're doing a, you know, connection charge, or I'll talk about impact fees in a moment. Really, all of those kind of require either some form of a a needs assessment or study that is identifying those costs and specifically uh, coming up with the methodology that you're going to use to establish those, you know, connection charges. Um, so I mean, you do, you know, there's a variety of ways you can use to, you know, kind of come up with that methodology. But, you know, it needs to be demonstrated that it's, you know, it's it's fair, it's reasonable, um, it needs to be available, you know, and, you know, basically be determined as the basis for those charges. So I think it, you can take a lot of different variables into consideration, but but yeah, that is the key, is making sure that the methodology that you're using. Like for a special assessment, you're required to do a special assessment report that identifies the cost. You know, are you doing the assessment based on, you know, linear feet, are you doing it on, um, you know, some kind of an acreage or or some kind of a usage? Um, you know, there, that that's a requirement under the statutes that you specify how you're coming up with that calculation, so it can be, um, you know, reasonable, fair and equitable.
Greg, this is Keith, um, would you have a, would there, in your mind, would there be a distinction between a a connection charge and a area assessment? In other words, a special assessment based on the area served?
I think it, I I think it kind of depends on the nature of the improvements. I mean, if you have, you know, if it's primarily utility related, um, you know, that maybe more lends itself to connection charges. If it's more kind of a broader combination of infrastructure where there's utilities and road extensions, and that's what you're attributing to the benefited area, you know, you can always use a combination of assessments or or connection charges. So I think it somewhat depends on what you're, uh, you know, what you're installing and how how you go about determining which which is most appropriate.
Okay, thanks.
So another another mechanism to kind of raise revenue is impact fees. Uh, and these are, you know, cash contributions that are imposed on a developer uh, for providing public improvements that are related to land development and servicing new development. Uh, under state statutes, you cannot impose an impact fee to address an existing deficiency. So for example, if you have a, you know, a a water well, for example, um, and a portion of that well is servicing a new area and a portion of that well is improving the existing capacity of the water system. The impact fee can only be used for the portion that is servicing new development. Um, you have to exclude the portion of the well that is, you know, for the for the system overall and, you know, pay pay for that through some other mechanism other than an impact fee. Um, the impact fees are collected through the issuance of a building permit. Um, that's really the only mechanism that you can collect an impact fee, so there certainly needs to be a timing consideration of when the impact fees are implemented, uh, and when building permits are going to be issued. Um, you need to kind of do a needs assessment, you need to have a public hearing, uh, to collect an impact fee, and then there's time constraints. Uh, from the time the needs assessment is adopted, you have seven years to collect impact fees. Um, you can get a three-year extension if you determine there's some extending circumstances. If you do not expend the, uh, impact fees, uh, for the purpose they were collected within those period here described by statute, you are required to refund them to the property, the current property owner with interest. Um, so, you know, you don't want to, um, create impact fees, uh, past the study and then have the development not materialize for four years, because your window has already started to collect those impact fees. So there, there really needs to be a correlation and timing between when the impact fee is imposed and when the development is going to be, um, materialized. So some examples of projects, you know, that could be funded through an impact fee, you know, various utility improvements, water sewer, stormwater, uh, recreational facilities, you know, there's some highway and transportation facilities or signalization, um, you know, solid waste, um, you know, and some facility improvements as well. Um, generally speaking, impact fees aren't as widely used as they used to be. A lot of the statutory criteria that I just summarized, uh, came about in law changes that were implemented back in two thousand and six um, that were kind of really, um, proposed and encouraged, uh, by the Builders Association. Um, and so, you know, they put in those time constraints, they put in, um, you know, that they have to be refunded at a certain point in time. Um, and so, you know, I think, uh, their usefulness isn't as, uh, significant as they used to be. So I mean, these aren't as widely used as they as they were in the past, but they are still a tool available under the statutes. Other revenue sources, um, there's a wheel tax, um, that, uh, can be collected, um, and is kind of collected by the Department of, uh, Transportation, DOT, uh, on behalf of the village, um, and then is dispersed, uh, to the village, so it's kind of an extra fee, uh, that is imposed. Um, there are, uh, twenty-eight municipalities, when I looked earlier this week, that presently have a wheel tax. There's some counties that do as well, uh, at least as far as the municipalities, that wheel tax ranges from, uh, ten dollars to thirty dollars, uh, you know, per vehicle. Um, so that's just kind of another, you know, non-levy revenue source that's available, um, you know, to fund, uh, transportation improvements. So another tool that, um, is kind of been gaining some momentum here, particularly over the course of, uh, I'd say the last year, um, is transportation utilities. Uh, where we've been working with, uh, you know, several communities that are in the various stages of implementing these transportation utilities. Um, it really kind of uses the same statutory framework, um, as a utility, uh, water sewer, stormwater utility, where there's a user rate, uh, charged to fund the operation of building and maintaining, uh, transportation systems. So covering the operational costs associated with regular road maintenance and then also addressing, uh, capital investment in roads as well. Uh, generally speaking, it utilizes a trip generation model as far as the system of usage that's based on the Institute of Transportation Engineering, uh, Trip Generation Manual. So broadly speaking, a trip is any time a car enters or leaves a driveway. Uh, so different land use types have different, you know, trip generation rates. Um, you know, this is a user charge, so, you know, it's, it impacts properties that are, you know, tax exempt uh, and don't pay, uh, property taxes. So it's a way to kind of broaden potentially the revenue that's collected, uh, to help fund transportation, uh, projects. Um, there's no direct statutory authority that describes a transportation utility. Um, it's kind of linked broadly to the Home Rule Authority, uh, where municipalities have the authority to act, you know, for the good and order of the community, uh, for commercial benefit, health, safety and wel- welfare, and just carry out other means to accomplish those objectives. Uh, so, you know, generally speaking, municipalities are using the same statute, same form of statutory authority that was relied upon to create uh, stormwater utilities, you know, that first got introduced several years ago. Uh, so transportation utilities in terms of kind of their legality has not really yet been tested in Wisconsin, but there are several communities that are at this present time moving forward, uh, with implementing, you know, these, uh, revenue streams to help pay for their their transportation uh, projects. Um, you know, just a general comment on those, I mean, you, you know, you need some very specific and well-documented information to go forward and create a transportation, uh, utility. I mean, very good evidence and planned uses for how you're going to use the funds to maintain infrastructure. Uh, very specific, you know, capital improvement plans that identify what you're going to be using, these, the transportation utility dollars to pay for, um, in terms of specific street projects and things of that nature. Um, you know, it's the methodology and how you're using that, um, you know, the instance that we've been involved in these, you know, has been pretty, you know, robust, and there's been a lot of, you know, background data that, you know, is used to do these calculations in terms of what's charged. So I mean, that's, um, it isn't something we recommend that you do just to kind of say, hey, we wanna collect some other revenue and help pay for streets. We're gonna start collecting this fee, um, we, you know, th- there really needs to be some some detailed context behind it. So that's, that's kind of the, the one, um, item to be aware of if that's, you know, something that ultimately gets, you know, even conceptually evaluated. Just in terms of some some comments here on just kind of, you know, growth in general, I mean, I think that's kind of what we've been talking about here in terms of, you know, certainly, you know, paying for infrastructure and expanding tax base, whether that's in the TID or outside the TIDS. Um, and, you know, as you're all familiar with, Wisconsin communities are subject to levy limits. And what that means is that the village can increase its allowable levy each year, uh, by the percentage of their growth that is directly attributable to net new construction. And then there are other, uh, exemptions or adjustments on the levy limit, uh, law and on the worksheet that allow you to increase your levy beyond the net new construction amount. And the, and the village takes advantage of those, most notably for, uh, general obligation debt service, which is exempt from levy limits. Um, so any growth that you get that's related to net new construction, so the DOR, you know, annually for every community, you know, kind of publishes a report that shows, you know, how your value changes from year to year. And that value is broken down by, you know, what's attributable to economic change, you know, appreciation, depreciation, um, you know, net new construction. Um, you know, personal property or other factors, you know, whether there's, you know, demolition or corrections from prior years. Uh, assessed values, all of that is kind of, uh, you know, broken down for each community, uh, you know, on an annual basis. Uh, but for levy limit purposes, um, you know, you can only increase your levy based on the percentage increase due to net new construction. And that includes any new construction that includes within TID districts. So while you're not taxing the increment value in the TID district for your general levy for the village on an annual basis, you don't get the benefit of that increment value until the TID closes. You do get the benefit of that value from your net new construction percentage for levy limits. So, you know, what does that mean in context? So on this chart, um, you know, looking at your net new construction percentage for the, um, you know, as of twenty twenty for the twenty twenty-one budget, that was one point four seven percent. So the amount of new value from that new construction was eighteen million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand of your twenty nineteen equalized value, that was one point four seven percent of it. So that meant, but, you know, your levy could go up by seventy-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars before you apply other adjustments. So this kind of quantifies what is the benefit of growth from a levy limit perspective. So let's look at illustration. So your actual net new construction was, you know, that eighteen million, uh, would almost, you know, nineteen million. If that would have been twenty-five million, your allowable levy for the twenty-one budget before debt adjustments would have been about a hundred one thousand dollars. And then you can see going down the chart, the higher that net new construction, the higher your allowable levy increase. Um, so this just kind of quantifies how new growth and new value, whether that's inside a TID or outside a TID, correlates to your ability to increase your levy to, you know, pay for your operating budget and and other factors within your budget each year. So, um, you know, there's, your tax base growth overall can be from that new construction, economic change, personal property, other factors. That impacts your overall tax base and your tax rate. How much you collect from your tax levy is really primarily driven by net new construction, uh, and then other adjustments. So this just wanted to kind of quantify how growth gets correlated to your ability to collect tax revenue. Just some other items kind of related to the utilities, you know, if you see growth and expansion of the, um, utility system, you know, the water utility pays a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, um, you know, which can be, at the village's discretion, can be less than the maximum that's allowed by the Public Service Commission. So that's a charge that is built into your utility rates that results in revenue back to the village and the general fund. Um, its purpose is to kind of keep, you know, municipal, uh, utilities on par with private utility systems in terms of, you know, tax liability. Uh, the pilot amount, you know, can be based on, you know, on the following, it's kind of be the utility plant and service that's financed by utility operations, other contributed utility plant assets and service, uh, construction work in progress, uh, and then any plant improvements outside the limits of, uh, the water system. So these are all calculations that are kind of done annually to kind of determine what, uh, assets go into that, you know, calculation. And then the, you know, the municipal tax rate, uh, is applied to those taxable assets to determine what, um, you know, the water utility's pilot payment's going to be. So as the water utility, uh, system expands, you know, there is the ability for the village to capture some additional revenue through uh, the pilot payment, but you do as a village have the discretion to collect less than the maximum allowed, uh, that's allowed by the, uh, PSC. So just to kind of at least conclude my, kind of my comments here, I think really what we've been kind of talking about here. Um, and as I gather, you know, I think the the general priorities that the village is trying to balance is, um, you know, balancing growth and operations or or your day-to-day, uh, services that you provide to your residents. I think, you know, you're situated similar to to many communities in Wisconsin that you're, you know, looking to provide your day-to-day services, um, you know, to your residents. Uh, but you're also trying to promote growth and economic development, uh, to expand your tax base, diversify your tax base. Um, and, you know, as your growth goes up, you know, that can more favorably impact your tax rate, uh, you know, but those, you know, those objectives sometimes can be, you know, a little bit competing with one another, uh, in terms of, you know, where you direct that investment. So I think, you know, most communities are trying to find that appropriate balance between the two. Um, as I mentioned, you know, more communities are shifting the burden, particularly for infrastructure related to new development, to the developer themselves. Um, and maybe possibly reimbursing some of those costs, but instead of the village fronting those costs, um, you know, for on behalf of. For on behalf of having that area develop, uh, the, the developers paying for it, um, potentially getting reimbursed. Um, and or they're utilizing, you know, TID districts to. Share in that cost of new infrastructure or infrastructure related primarily to economic development, and as we've been, you know, discussing. You know, Weston really has, you know, some good financial leverage at both of your TIDS, uh, to continue doing that. Um, you know, I think, you know, one way, you know, that we've been asked in, in a lot of places to really help. I'd help address this is really to just do some multi-year forecasting, I mean, you can also do this internally, but. It's really kind of doing a multi-year forecasting model, both for your operations. And for your capital, both for, you know, investing in existing infrastructure. And also what's necessary for new infrastructure to really just kind of see what is that fiscal impact and. What can you afford under levy limits and kind of what's achievable, um, under all these financial parameters? Uh, I think that's, you know, in my opinion, kind of the best way to get a handle on all of this. Um, is because it's usually going to be about prioritization and. Trying to strike that appropriate balance, I mean, I think that's, you know, most communities know they have to do both. They have to maintain existing services, meet uh their residents and businesses' expectations for that, but they also need to. Promote growth and development, but there's all these various constraints that we've been talking about that, you know. Have to be taken into consideration, so by looking at all of it comprehensively, you know, from a financial perspective. Um, it can help make some of that prioritization uh a little easier, because then you can kind of see what's, what's achievable and what isn't. From a financial standpoint, so uh just some observations or comments on, on my part for, for what that's worth, so. Uh, I'm happy to pause here and, and see if there's any other uh questions or comments I'd, I'd be happy to answer.
This is Keith, I just wanted to make a couple of highlights on a couple of things that were mentioned earlier. So you were going through the uh net new construction number and our annual increase as a percentage, and Jessica had done a. A rundown of this also over an eight year period, I think it was. From twenty thirteen? Through twenty twenty. And uh, that average net new construction number. As a percentage has been like one point five percent, just as a matter of information for the board, so. Very near what we, we observed here or what we experienced for this year's tax levy. So, and one of the concerns is how this is gonna. And, and we are getting streamed, of course, with this, with their levy limits in terms of operating budget and, and. Revenue that supports operations as compared to our ability just to. As we take on debt to be able to adjust our levy to accommodate debt, you know, as I've said before, and I know Jessica will say it. Greg will say the same thing, I guess we can, we can take on debt for capital and it's not. Prohibited, really, you know, we don't have, we don't have the restrictions on that, that's not saying we gotta go on borrowing, you know, to our. Heart's content, but you know, and I, I think this board has been very conservative and frugal over the years. But the challenge is in the operating budget, and that's, I think, where our, our, our funding operations, and that's where I think some of the other. Slides come in when we talk about options to, to supplement the tax levy, whether that's a. Stormwater utility which we have in place or a, you know, a transportation utility, real tax. That's not saying we're advocating that any things need to be done, but those are options that we have, so. And that's just a comment there, and then with respect to the payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot payment for the water utility. I don't know how many people are really aware of that, but it's, it is something that's, that's part of everybody's bill. It's a tax paid by the utility in uh this. Is it be this tax year or last tax year? It's a four, it's four hundred eighty thousand dollars in the building under water operations, which. I think we have about a two million dollar operating budget, if I'm not mistaken. So you're talking about somewhere in the twenty percent range of the uh, of the utilities. Expenses that are related to that tax, other point of information.
That's also something that was B I the government not that long ago, because what's calculated. That number of four hundred eighty thousand dollars, we're allowed to take the county tax rate, the local tax rate. The school district and the technical college, so we take the total assets of the water utility. Which, um, utility plan, January first of twenty twenty was thirty one million dollars. So we get to take that full value, subtract out any plant that's in the Delta West Rothschild, so it's about one point six. So I take the total value of our assets of twenty nine point seven million dollars and I get to multiply it by the. Tax rate of all those taxing jurisdictions, which is twenty three dollars and fifty six cents. So that's how that four hundred eighty thousand has gotten, um, it wasn't that long ago that there was talk that. That's not fair to the water utility customers, why do they have to pay taxes on all that? And get to include the school district and the county, and neither the county nor the school district get any of those funds. I mean, it was talked about like, well, maybe we should be having to give the school district their portion of that four hundred eighty thousand dollars. That's just gonna get, that's just a point of information, that was talked about probably five years, twelve, six years ago, that. The village was getting too much, municipalities were being able to collect all these, this money. Using other people's tax rates, not having to share, so that's the interesting tidbit.
Anybody? Do you have a quick, if you don't mind? Craig, this is Clay Schultz, I'm the police chief here at Evers Metro, uh, for the village of Weston. And kind of like how you summarize it at the end is kind of the reason I'm here with. How to balance the need for growth and service delivery, and I know the village of Weston is certainly not alone in that capacity. Um, as chiefs in the state, we have met with legislators and, and expressed our concern on how we're gonna keep up service levels. With the levy restrictions that are in place, and they, they revert us back to, well, there's, there's always the referendum option. Uh, which is not very popular, um, I know at the state level, the governor is talking about some. Uh, redistribution of state shared revenue, there was some talk on that, there was also some talk about allowing. Um, the levy to be raised by, I think, a half a percent, but that only applies to cities over thirty thousand, but again, that's through referendum. My question is, do you have um some experience on how that works, or are there other referendums, just out of curiosity point on? Especially for public safety referendums, have you dealt with that? And if so, is there a very brief explanation on some requirements and how that works?
Sure, um, you know, I think part of what uh was included in the governor's budget proposal that was introduced last night. At least on the levy limits is that, um, you know, levy limits have been around since two thousand and five and at, at certain points, there was. Allowable increases due to net new construction or a fixed percentage. Um, you know, if your net new construction was less than an amount, that amount, at one point that was as high as three point eight six percent. Um, what the governor had proposed was that the levy limit be based off of net new construction. Uh, or two percent, so if your net new construction is under uh that, you could at least get it to, to two percent. Uh, as far as uh referendums go, um, you know, there are. Um, you know, I think more and more examples with each passing year of communities that are doing levy limit uh referendums. Um, you know, if you uh do that, the requirements under statute, um, you know, you need to specify what, you know, the levy. Limit increases for, um, so I mean, it can be fairly broad, but I mean, you do need to put some context to it. Uh, and then you also need to explain whether or not that is going to be a one-time. Uh, allowable levy increase, or if that increase is going to be um ongoing. Um, so, you know, I, we've been working with a community in the Madison area that's going to be doing a levy limit referendum. Um, you know, that their, their question specifies it's going to cover a, you know, a broad, you know, variety of. Uh, operating costs, but you know, certainly part of what has driven that was, you know, there, there's some increases in, in public safety, particularly in the area of fire. Uh, and so, you know, they, they were going for the, a, an increase at a specified dollar amount, and they said that was going to be ongoing, so. That's kind of the, um, you know, kind of the legal criteria that needs to be satisfied to do a levy limit referendum, specify what it's for. And if it's ongoing or one time.
One last question for you, is there a timer element where you'd have to, when you can get it on a ballot, is it at a, a general election, or is it every? Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am, that, that recently changed, um, you can now, you know, pretty much do a levy limit referendum, you know, in, in the spring or, or in the fall. Um, that, that just changed, because the prior requirement was, was that there's. Certain calculations that you need to also include in this, uh, in a levy limit referendum question that are related to net new construction. Um, you don't know your net new construction until uh August of each year. And so practically that meant you could only do a levy limit referendum in November. Uh, well, that really wasn't very practical, because most communities have their budget done uh in November, so uh that law was changed, so now you can do levy limit. Referendums, you know, more in the spring and use estimates uh for your net new construction, so there, the, the timing for levy limit. Referendums is much more flexible than it, um, uh, than it was, you know, as recently as about a, a year and a half ago.
Thank you very much.
Greg, this is Lauren White, I have a question concerning, so your community has a referendum to increase the, the levy limit and. You um s- expend the money for personnel or whatever you want to talk about it. And I would imagine that impacts your expenditure restraint program, correct?
It does, yeah, so, you know, while you may, it may allow you to increase your allowable levy under the levy limit law. Um, you still need to be aware of how that impacts your, your total. General fund expenditures and levy support to other funds other than debt that are subject to expenditure restraint. So those, those two, uh, you know, your desire to increase your allowable levy, you know, could compete with your ability to comply with expenditure restraint. Uh, but they're, your, your ability to comply with expenditure restraint is that calculation's done on an annual basis, but uh similar to. When communities close TID districts and you're allowed to increase your allowable levy. Uh, you get a one-time levy limit adjustment for a TID closure, if you take advantage of that, that may drive up your operational. Costs and reset your levy at a higher amount. You know, that, those could be positive objectives for a community depending on what they're trying to accomplish, but. It can be very hard to comply with expenditure restraint the year after a TID closure for, for that reason.
You would lose that expenditure restraint money for only one year, correct?
Yeah, you, you can re, you can re, requalify the next year, so, um, yeah, that's, it's not, it's not permanent.
Reset the clock.
Right, right.
Thank you. So I, I guess I don't know if the board has any questions or. Uh, directions after this, I think, as we talked earlier, um. The staff, I think the board has indicated the priority, the priority that we want to focus on. In terms of TID one would be uh Weston Avenue, Weston Avenue corridor. Uh, complete the uh Schofield Avenue corridor plan and then uh modify the uh. Tiff project plan for TID number two. So I think we were talking about. A, a target of having the, those two project plan, or I should say the, the corridor plans. Um, hearings potentially in March? Do want to, uh. I guess ask whether or not we, I, we have an engineer that's been doing some of the preliminary study, the, the. Relative to the corridor plan, A E com, and uh. In terms of looking at design and, you know, so forth for the corridor. Uh, one thought is we could, uh. Negotiate a contract with them and have them continue to work on that for the utility design and street design, or we can go offer proposals, I guess. The latter being much more time-consuming process, but. I guess I'm not sure what the board's preferences on that, if they, if they're comfortable with us just moving forward with it. Firm that would be very familiar with the, the pro- the project at this point.
Where's the firm from?
The office that serves us would be uh this, uh, Plover, we stand at this point, right?
Well, it seemed in the past, I mean, when we used to use uh such Wisconsin engineers. And we, we didn't R F P them all the time, right?
Not all the time, no. And neither did we do Hecar, Becker and Hoppy when.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that was my next one right there, so.
So if, if we go, uh, to be devil's advocate here, if we go for R F Ps, I would assume A E com would have a leg up, because they've done a lot of the preliminary studies. And that may affect their, their bid, but, um. I, I, we do have trustees that prefer to have R F Ps out, and it does delay the project. Because you have to get times for companies to figure out, okay, how much of the cost is to do this. And I personally think if you have a company that's been doing preliminary work ahead of time, their costs may be a little bit lower, and they may wind up with a bid anyway. But, I, I'm flexible either way, I'm just wanna see it get done.
When is the last time that, uh, this group, this A E C O M, has done an R F P?
They are the engineering firm that was selected for the Crestwood Acres neighborhood project.
So at that time, that was an R F P.
Correct, yep.
So it's, it's not like they've been doing this for six or seven years without an R F P. So, you know, they've done, they've done one very currently, I, I think. I think that rule of thumb kind of helps and applies to, and eliminates the timeframe. That, that would be my opinion, that's one, two, one trustee. Is this something that we have to bring to the next vote, or what?
I think what we would do is just start talking with A E com and maybe bring a proposed contract to, to, to a future meeting. I guess the other thing you have to, that I always. Want to make sure you're aware of too, is that there's staff time involved in putting these.
Right.
R F Ps together and.
And then analyzing them, yeah.
Analyzing them, so.
I, I would, since it, since it just happened with them, I would be, my uh opinion would be to stay with them on this one. If there's another future one that we have a little bit more time on, that we wanna run them through at once and just make sure that they are. Who they keep, keep being, and then fine. This is, um, this is a, an exception to the rule, in this particular instance, let's just stick with A E com. Uh, John?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
You're fine with that, you?
Yeah.
Yep, and I heard yes on both, okay, all right, we're good. So that would be a six to one. I know, I know, I'm just saying, so.
All right, all right, so I think, uh, let's.
No, I think, we're fine, it doesn't have to be formalized, but I, that's the direction we should go.
Okay. I think it would require action when and if they ever, they come back with it.
Right, correct, yes.
We can always roll it down.
And start from scratch, that's true.
Exactly.
I mean, it's, it's the reality, we understand that. So, I don't know that I have anything else myself tonight, unless, you know, there's something specific that, um. And board members has a question for staff or other thoughts, uh, we do have a proposed. Single family subdivision now is being considered across from, uh. Here, or I'm sorry, uh. John Ziegler's subdivision.
That's Wintermere Oaks.
Wintermere Oaks.
Yeah. Uh, which, oh, here, okay.
Yeah, Michael's got the, kind of the.
Oh, it is a interproperty. Excellent, oh, wow. How many acres is that?
Roughly eighty.
Holy mackerel. Single family?
Uh, it's a mix, so the north portion would be small apartments that would butt up against the middle and the bridge would have.
Good mix.
Could also connect to, if you remember on the east side there, is this Widerski property.
Yeah, and then they're doing those townhouses, yeah.
They're doing apartments over there.
Yeah.
So then those would be kind of like townhomes and row houses along the street there. And then it'll phase into twin homes, which are basically like condo duplexes. Um, and then go into all those single.
Into all the singles.
Yep.
So how does this butt up to Wyndham?
Wyndham is down.
This is Labor and Drive.
Okay.
Um, which is the, I guess, the northernmost entrance into the subdivision.
Wow.
I believe this is kind of like where the.
Do we know who's proposing, or can we say?
Denian Homes.
This is Denian.
It is Denian, okay.
Site has some challenges with gas line easement.
Yes, it, and overhead.
Hollowing line and wetlands, so.
So you can, some of us almost be able to do toast without a toaster.
Transmission line across my.
I have one next to me and I've tried it and it doesn't work, so.
Okay, I think that's a good mix. I I like the fact that they have their multifamily on, and so you're not driving through the entire neighborhood to get to your multifamily.
Yeah. Which would cause more traffic, exactly.
Okay, so this is the corner of Weston and Birch up here on the left?
Uh, this would be Birchwood Highlands, like where my hand is.
Oh, okay.
A quarter mile from Weston Avenue, right there.
Okay.
So the that farmhouse that's out there right now is right here?
Right there.
Yes.
From the farmhouse down, it's all homes.
Correct.
And then north of it, it would be multifamily and down twin homes, whatever.
Correct.
Dragged down to the bottom. Does that road end or does it continue? Because currently it stops.
Birch goes all the way.
Birchwood Highlands, right.
It it does, oh, okay.
To Shurri.
Oh, to Shurri, you're right, yeah, Shurri, okay. Okay.
And they're talking about putting some, um,
You gotta go down the hot ones.
Using some of the like corners there for pedestrian paths and things like that as the last tar.
That's exciting.
Our line, and then around the other side.
How many single-family lots?
Looks like ninety-four.
Holy, wow, holy mackerel.
That's what, so how big are the lot, the average lot?
They're pretty good sized.
It depends what's left.
Or smaller, which would be like similar to what's in, um,
The high-shake ones are pretty good, too.
Probably like eleven, twelve thousand square feet. Um, but then those longer ones.
Holy, yeah.
Usually they're anywhere from the They could be ten thousand square feet, but they're usually anywhere between eleven and fifteen, which.
Those will go fast.
So what size of a house is it gonna be?
It'd be similar to, I mean, he's putting in, they're gonna be on the probably two sixty to three hundred thousand dollar home. He usually puts in a three-car garage. It it'd be similar to what's going in in Misty Pines.
Misty Pines and and kind of similar to where Wanta started his homes and then finished and he had three homes there and then Denian finished the whole thing. Back where Dick Yeager lives?
Yeah, I mean, he kind of said to him, met with him, that he'd kind of transitioned maybe from more of like a a starter home to a multifamily and then with the larger lots on the south side.
Well, not bylaws, none of them are bylaws, you know, that I've, even in Misty, you know, in the Misty Pines, you call it?
Yeah.
Or Mon, I don't think there's any bylaws in Misty.
There's a couple.
Is there? Oh, okay.
Those are the smaller ones closer to like the intersection.
Foot level, where you can.
So what, how many, how many living units would there be with the apartments and everything?
Well, he's still not sure about, those would be twelve-unit apartments there, but it's sounding like he's not probably gonna do that. He's not sure if he wants to to do the apartment, so when Michael and I were talking with MTS who's working on it, that could be something that could be incorporated potentially into either, it would be a different multifamily developer or potentially Swiderski could, I mean, they looked at the site too at one point. So it could be incorporated into their project to the east. He's, Heath isn't sure, he may keep the twin homes and the the row houses, but he's, he's not exactly sure on those. Um, those would probably be, if he kept them, they could be rental, otherwise they can basically be condos, there's actually could be like a condo. Kind of like what's over on Woodland.
On the west side of Birch, heading north, I believe. You know, there there, this is on the right-hand side. On the west side of Birch, there was somebody out from JSD Engineering. Is there site plans going into the property that abuts the Wyndham Oaks on the backside there?
But I've heard of it.
Other, there was somebody, JSD was out there. I saw, I saw him today.
We, he, Justin has asked me about multifamily, but he's never said anything about a location. We talked to them before, they were still looking at that, at the Camp Phillips Center area. No, this is the only comment that we've
That you've heard about.
Had contact with.
I was just, just curious, because I haven't seen those guys around in a while and
Yeah.
Get rid of that, a lot. Across.
We had some talk, um, probably about a year ago with the Life is Good site, someone was looking at developing that for some type of multifamily.
Is that the southwest corner of?
It would be right across from Birchwood, um, Highlands, that forty.
It was a, is that a HUD or a federal funded?
Not, I mean, a long time ago, somebody had looked at that. This was not one of those types of projects.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I see Mr. Jonathan has been very patient.
Thanks, Greg.
Do you need him anymore?
Thank you, Greg.
I think we can release him.
Yeah.
Thank you, Greg, I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries, you're welcome. Thanks for the time this evening.
Thanks for the presentation. Yep, sure, he's just riveted by the time it comes down.
Sorry. Really held him over.
I saw him doing this a couple times.
Yeah, yeah. Nodding off. Okay. Any more, any more discussion?
Jen, does any lots are, there's a development going across from Yeagers, is that what you're going?
Correct, yeah.
Those are like townhouses, I think, Jennifer?
That's an apartment complex.
Oh, okay.
We don't have, they just gave us a preliminary layout, um.
That was from last year or?
Was it like four, four twelve's or something?
I think so, yeah.
Four twelve's or six twelve's, and then they're also doing that one back on Callan. Then they're getting close to, I mean, that's all up already.
How big is that one on Callan?
I'd say what, thirty?
There's, um, I thought it was like thirty-two.
Yeah, thirty-two.
Thirty-two units, or it wasn't very big.
Thirty-two condos, yeah.
There's only four buildings and there's eight.
Three buildings.
Yeah.
Three buildings?
Yeah.
No, it's gonna be four.
I think it's a.
There's a pad up front that that it's there.
There was a a ten unit?
I've gone out there quite a bit. Oh, the one this way is one, and then two, you're right, it's three, you're right, it's three.
So then it's twenty-eight.
Three laterals.
Yeah.
And a ten must be, so it's only twenty-eight.
Yeah, the pond is gone, which I think should be gone. Yeah. And it's all single level, no basement, right?
That would make the.
Fifty-five.
Birch Street Speedway a little more challenging.
Okay. Spike strips off below. Are we, can we go into closed here?
I think that would be the next order of business.
Okay. Mr. Barb, here for a second.
Do you wanna give us?
It'll probably be here till ten thirty, chief, so if you wanna stick around.
I'll think about it.
All right, thank you.
You rather have a root canal.
Thanks for attending.
Thank you.
Do I stay or no?
This is nineteen.
I don't.
What?
Unless the board is in a session.
I, I think we can stay.
Any of the directors can leave the village.
I'm trying to stay.
I got nothing else to do.
What?
I've got nothing else to do.
Yeah, yeah. How old are your, how old are your kids?
Uh, they are seven and four and they are with my wife at her parents having dinner tonight, so. Tried to go home to an empty house.
So there's no, there's no Playstation or nothing waiting for you, so.
No. I haven't done.
My son, my son used to always want me to play and he was so good by the time I started playing. He would take the worst set of, the worst football team possibly and then give me the best football team. And within fifteen minutes, I still threw down my handheld. I was just so damn mad, I just, I could not do anything. And I should have just played when he went to sleep and and got my rhythm, you know.
He should have done the Lauren White method.
Yeah, just, I mean, he was throwing, you know, just spiking the ball at me and.
My, oh, my brother and I, we would, uh, we would always go head-to-head and Madden.
Yeah.
He would always be able to return punts and kickoffs for touchdowns and meanwhile, I'd have these long four-minute
Yeah.
uh, drives, bringing it down to like three or four seconds before the snap.
Oh.
We split most games, but.
Yeah. I was good at like Donkey Kong and Pac-Man.
Oh, we got, uh.
And now they don't even play it together, they play, you know, vert lines, so.
Here's a first one.
Anyway, fun stuff.
It's just something Mark fucked up beating someone one year, so.
Yeah.
I think you're just waiting.
It's still fun beating the secondary.
I used to play Space Invaders, you know, at the Cabaret. Oh, but I, I'll tell you, in Appleton, I was, I had the high number for a long time. I should be really proud because I'm still working. I could have retired if I wouldn't have gone there.
Dragon Slayer, the first one was played on a, a LaserDisc.
I think we could sell a lot of tickets if you two would play Space Invaders against each other at WoW.
Well, my dad.
Let me pick the game.
My dad got, what was that first one, Ping Pong or? And so my dad gets pong, where my my cousins come from Green Bay and I mean, everyone's just glued to this console TV. Six months later, you know, then my mom and dad were in the the fire room, the the study. And and we never really watched, so we just use this strictly for pong. Six months later, we've got this, this, you know, this light in there. It's just completely identified. Burned, burned, it's burned, it's click right into the TV. Oh, my gosh. Unreal. Unreal.
They've been spending your quarters at rallies or?
I'll remove everybody once they go any closer. In Appleton, we had a place in Valley Fair Mall, the first mall in the country. And they had, uh, oh, go-karts in the bag and then a, a thing in the front that, oh, my gosh. We used to ride our bikes all the way out there.
Yeah. I don't think I got all of them back on Monday, so.
Oh, I I just left mine here.
Aqua, you left mine.
So, I, if somebody got it back.
Whenever when I count on vacation.
No, I got one.
Oh, I think, but I don't think I took it.
Anywhere.
Thought I left it, she had me signing.
Oh, man.
Yeah, I think I left it right here, yeah.
You learn to accept defeat if you're given a victory.
Yeah, well, I guess Terry was, is.
Bring back. Something that's like last of them, you know.
So Jen, you bet they were the two fifty to three.
That's where I got some final type homes. Yeah, there's no mercy.
That's what, that's what they're going for.
Yeah. They are.
Misty Pines. The higher.
Water?
Well, they're probably higher now because.
Where, where am I, you know, back by Wanta and those, Gail Marshall lives?
Uh-huh.
What, we've been calling, never get that right.
Edgewood?
Oh, Edgewood Estates, yeah, yeah. Those are some nice homes back there at Denian.
No, I gotta figure out.
Really nice. Some different, different style brick and.
I thought there was Timber Rubber.
That's Timber.
I shoot from so far.
I got this room with it.
No, no, no. So it's, it's
Things like.
Big brick holes together, miss more, smaller stuff. The two big brick ones were the first. Upset about that for a long time. And those two, that's, that was one though. And Dick Yeager's right around the corner.
Sorry, because you.
You know, you go out on SS, it's not the first one going in. And you drive all the way back.
If I could go in.
Anyway.
Yep.
All right, are we, are we ready?
I move to go into closed session.
Okay, so moved by, uh, second by Ziegler Seegler, thank you. On the, do we roll call this?
Yes.
Yes, roll call vote.
Ramaling?
Hi.
Vini?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Manel?
Hi.
White?
Hi.
Ziegler?
Hi.
Nate, nobody's on?
No, I'm full, give me one minute.
You're doing what?
I'm, I'm taking people out right now.
Okay, thank you. At a house home, I would definitely stay out to see if I could stay in, you know. I would, you know, just real quietly. Yeah, I would, I would send a little note to Nate, twenty bucks if you leave me in.
Credit cards only.
Yeah, credit cards only, Nate writes back. Kindred seller, kindred seller.
Currently that are now in the meeting, towns are trans, shown also by Sherry Winkoff. And that's it.
All right.
Okay, we're ready? All right, move to closed session per nineteen point eight five, one, parent one, parent E. Deliberate, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, I should have said that. All right, amendments. Let's see what, what, who we got here. Yep, from, from the forest. How'd we do?
Well, I, I think pretty well. Uh, I talked to Rob Wyman on Tuesday and we had a good conversation. He, he actually went back and he found another development that they financed involving Weston that had the same language in it, the repurchase language. So I think that, uh, was helping, yeah, that that helped. Uh, and we just had a good conversation and it was the first time I talked to him because all the communication has been through TrigV before. Uh, and he said he'd come back to me and, uh, he did. And in the email, uh, when he responded, he asked whether or not we'd be willing to revise the the option that we have. Uh, we have an option to repurchase the property if, or to match any offer if if TrigV would sell the property, uh, within the first five years. And we don't have a lot of, uh, right of first refusals in most of our, you know, in our development agreements. I I don't know exactly why, uh, one was in this line. Based on the meeting on Monday night, though, my guess would be that someone was probably concerned that TrigV would buy the entire lot, but because he's not using it all, that he would sell maybe three-quarters of it off to somebody else. And perhaps the village didn't want that to happen and that's why, uh, they wanted to have that, that, uh, option. I'm sorry, the right of first refusal in the, in the agreement.
Right.
So, uh, so the request to us was to have us to to allow the bank to have priority, uh, when it comes to the, uh, right of first refusal. And, uh, so I think it really comes down to how important the right of first refusal is to the board in this deal. And, uh, I don't know, uh, well, first off, if he wanted to buy it and he wanted to sell part of it, uh, what steps would he have to go through to do that and is that possible?
Well, he'd have to rezone.
Yeah.
I mean, with the building on there, plus he'd have to have thirty-some feet for, he's gonna traverse around there, right? I mean, he's gonna have truck traffic on the side of the building. So he's gonna have to have, you know, something there. I mean, I know he's only been on there a little bit with the building.
Right.
And then the rest of the land is there, but didn't somebody say that there was gonna be truck traffic there?
So is this driveway though?
He doesn't drive there.
Oh, and another thought the other night was we're, we're all kind of thinking that maybe he ain't gonna build. I drove out there on Tuesday, there's a lot going on out there.
Well, yeah, they want.
He's got a lot going on.
They want to start on Monday.
Yeah, I mean, I know, but we kind of, some of us, I might have, I think, had the feeling and not seeing it, that, okay, is this gonna happen or not? And there's a lot going on out there, you know, so.
Can you put any, any conditions on the, the consolidation of the lots? That they can't be self-divided for a period of a minimum of twenty years or something like that? I mean, that would answer our questions that he's gonna just spin off.
Right, right.
Or come back to the board to try to spin off three-quarters of that lot for a profit? And I'm just.
Yeah, I think we could go back to them and say that their changes are are fine. But we, uh, yeah, no, I think we could do that.
Okay, just work together, Barb.
Well, yeah, I guess that was my concern, not so much that he wouldn't build, but he didn't need that whole lot. That there was enough there that he could do what he wanted to do and then sell that part. And we just gave him a break on it, I guess.
Right.
I, I had concern there that.
I think we all did, yeah. Uh, Lauren, same thing or?
You, uh, took a look at the documents that Mr. Donner sent out earlier, where it shows a site plan? There is a fairly large, oh, it looks like a space for trucks to come in and then back up to the valley, which takes.
That's what he's using that portion for.
Right.
It's on like twenty-eight feet that the building is actually going across the lot.
Okay, well.
That's twenty-eight feet?
Yeah.
I thought it was smaller than that, okay.[1756.98]
Yeah, I think it was twenty-eight feet when we measured it. Because originally we asked him if he needed the whole lot because I had concerns. And like, that's big enough for us to sell it to somebody else and have another development.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd go for a control if I was him. I'd do the same thing. So. Any more on that? Okay, did you have more?
Well, that's, you know, this is the amendment and so, you know, for me, it's you know, it, it's not as important as the, the repurchase if he doesn't build.
Right.
Because if he doesn't build, we'd want control over the lot.
Right.
That was the non-negotiable part of it. I think with the right of first refusal, you know, what we want to prevent is him closing on the property and then turning around and selling. And he's gonna build, but the building's only gonna be twenty-eight feet onto the new parcel. Then he ends up selling that lot and making a profit on it when we gave him a grant.
For, for nothing, yeah.
And so, and, and, you know, we don't have any control over who he sells it to at that point either, so. So I think just preventing him from subdividing the parcel because he's gonna combine them within one year of.
Well, they're, they're gonna be combined like at the sale.
At the sale.
So the C S A is already done and actually it's, Sherry has it in her office signed, so.
Okay.
So if there's an agreement that he, you know, that the lot will not be subdivided once it's put together for a period of time.
There is no agreement right now. That it won't be.
Right, right. That's what we would have to add into this. So if that's what you're concerned about.
Yeah, I think that'll fly. I mean, you two are working with this the most.
What if, you know, what if it doesn't?
Well, then, then that's too bad for him. That means he really is gonna, you know, gonna sell the damn thing, you know?
So then, if we put that, that little bit in there, the bank ain't gonna have an issue with that. What, who, who's the other twenty-five percent lender here? B?
Wisconsin Development, Wisconsin Business Development.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Would be.
All right. All right, and he can, you talked to this in Incredible Bank, he can talk to them. I mean, he, he understands how this is all working, okay?
I don't think it's gonna.
I think right, right now, we have the, you know, five-year right of first refusal, so I would probably just stick with the five years.
Yeah.
You know, not, I, I wouldn't go out any further than that. But.
Okay.
So I'm just curious, is it, is there a risk though that he is gonna spin it off to Trigvi Incorporated at the end of five years so that he can peddle it? I don't.
Well, I mean, are we doing it with anybody though?
Well, right now, under the original agreement, we only have a right of first refusal for five years.
Yeah, okay.
So he could, he could do that after that, and I think we just didn't want him to, you know, to buy it and then for that, for that reason, to sell it and make a profit. So if he holds it for five, if he builds a building and he holds it for at least five years and then sells off what he doesn't want, I don't think anyone's gonna be concerned about.
Well, hopefully he sells it to somebody that builds something.
Right, right.
And then who cares? If they're building something, jobs are coming, you know, I mean, in the business park, I think Joe Jordan, somebody had some land out there that we were kind of questioning if we should maybe ask them back.
Maybe want to.
And they did some, yeah, okay.
No, there, he still hasn't built on it.
Oh, he still hasn't, okay.
So if.
I'm good to go. Oh, I'm sorry.
And if there's a, let's just say things went south and they ended up having to foreclose it, what happened to that? I mean, if they foreclosed it and the bank ended up buying the building and wanted to spin it off, is that something they would have to approach us for, right? I mean, or is that still run with the land with a foreclosure?
Well, if they don't finish, the only way we have the right to repurchase it is if they don't, they don't finish construction. As far as the right of first refusal, I think that's what the bank is concerned about. They want to be able to, if they foreclose on it, be able to sell it to somebody and.
You know, I, I, this feels like it's been two weeks, but it's been a couple of days.
Yeah.
And I know we brought up Susan Lane. Did you have a chance to talk to her or? Or would have it maybe been inappropriate if we had brought her into this, right?
Yeah, I didn't talk to her.
And that's fine. The boys and girls thub and stuff, so. Lauren?
Despite all the contradictions we have about this, it gets it off of of being a village property and gets it into private hands, we generate tax revenue. It may not be the best of situations, but somebody is gonna pay taxes on that property. And it comes off, it comes onto the tax roll and off of our burden.
I mean, the most important thing, no doubt, is that they build the building, they said they're gonna build, right? I mean, that's really what we want to have done. Anything more than that is, you know, is fine, but not necessary.
Yeah. All right. Um, we're gonna take action outside on this, right?
Okay.
Move on to Tommy Docs.
Do we have any other?
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm just, I'm just curious if we have any other properties tied up under options like this or from that same era?
Right now, no. The last one would have been the Marisi one that we took back and then sold to Wassa Supply.
Right.
So that's the only one that I'm aware of besides the Wanta one. And when we approached the C D A about that a few years ago, they didn't wanna do anything with it.
Yeah, I think you, you mean the option though, right?
Yeah, the option, I'm just curious if there's any of these that are.
Well, they all had, every single one had like an option, but they never got. Like there was never anybody pursued them.
I, I think what he's talking about is, is an, an option to purchase where we gave them, where they let, we let them hold on to the opportunity to buy the land if they wanted for a certain.
Oh, no, that was the only one.
Yeah. So, but we've had, you know, I think when I first became the village attorney, we had a property where someone did not develop it within the timeframe they were supposed to, and we did take it back.
Yeah, that was the Marisi.
Is that the Marisi one?
Right. All right, and the Wanta, what, what's happened?
Wanta still has, that situation is out there with the Wanta one. It's right across from the beer company.
Fabianos?
From Fabianos, okay.
Yeah, it's right across the street.
So when, when the C D A was, was it I and Husheng on the C D A? Who, who said?
I think so. I think we took it. I don't remember exactly. I have to look.
It's a long time ago.
C D A was meeting more regularly.
Yeah.
They want C D A.
Well.
But how do you enforce it on one and not on another, I don't?
Yeah, well, I, and that's why we should, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely more confident now in my third year.
We have time to do all that stuff that we've got here.
We should take a look at that.
We asked.
I think we're a little off the topic.
Uh, you're right.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. Yeah, Steve. Um, let's see here. Uh, let's go into the district, terms of tax increment, district pay goal agreement with Tommy Docs for purchase and development of land in the village business park. Where are we?
So, I, we're revisiting this item, I guess based on feedback we received. I think I received some feedback and I think a number of trustees probably did. Of the owner of the project or, you know, Owen Jones warned me that, you know, if we were only able to assist them at the level of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that he's not able to do the project here. I guess, having gone through this evaluation of the project and the the information that's provided on Monday, now I guess as I said in my email to you, uh, maybe we should be maybe meeting a little bit farther ahead to, so that everybody can digest all these things a little better. And I could have done a better job explaining it probably, but I guess ultimately, as I said, and we'd had several people look at this, Greg Johnson looked at it. Jessica looked at it. I guess the, under the pay goal arrangement, pay as you go, there was, it was a thing that Greg talked about in his presentation tonight, where the developer's taking on more risk and he has to create the increment. The value in the, in the project, which generates the tax increment, that, that supports the amount of of assistance that they are then eligible to be paid, and this is paid out over, under the proposed terms over a ten-year period. Under the, you know, the way we analyze this, we're, we've estimated that this, the seventy-five percent of the of the increment would be three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars over the course of the ten years. So that is, that's the amount that we recommend, I've been, I'd recommend it be approved under the pay goal arrangement. And, and then because this site does not have a utility connection, which normally would have been there had, had we owned this property from day one when we did the utility work in Progress Way. That's a class that would not have been incurred, but we wanted to roll that into a, what we want to call a site work grant of twenty-five thousand dollars. So the total amount of the, of the proposed assistance would be three hundred and eighty-one thousand sixty-eight dollars as is discussed in the proposed resolution and in the.
Three eighty-one what?
Three hundred and eighty-one thousand sixty-eight dollars. Could be the three fifty-six.
Yes, and will that twenty-five cover that?
That is what he had gotten estimates on in terms of the.
Owen?
Yeah, yeah, he had been getting estimates on the project and it's in that.
And then on his property, it's up to him. Right, so this, this brings it in to his property, which, which we should have had.
The portion of the right of way that.
Right. Okay.
And how, how much was that done, I'm sorry, just for that?
Three eighty-one. No, no, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Five for the utility extension. It's gonna take de-watering, it's some unusual construction. And to do it the way that we want to see it done, it requires.
Why do I see a Tiff ask? Is that his initial ask? But then we came back with three fifty-six.
He's asked, he was asking for three hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
All right.
He was going through his own calculations, trying to follow against the way we would probably.
The three fifty-six number is something that we created with Greg, Jessica, I mean, all staff, right?
Three seventy-seven doesn't pencil out in terms of the way we calculate.
Okay, so three fifty-six is ours, not his ask. And then you put that twenty-five, however you want to call it, but it's, it's, it wouldn't matter, so. And we, you know, what we did the other night at one fifty, that should have been one fifty plus twenty-five. I mean, in, really, because that twenty-five should not be part of that. It's really something that we own. I, I am, if this pay goal is what we did with the property next door, I am fine with this. I don't, I don't want to dicker on this because we didn't dicker in the past. I know this is relatively new on this pay goal. But if we're gonna continue this pay goal process, which I feel a lot better about than having an administrator or, you know, somebody else come up with a who gets what, and that's, that's kind of how it used to be. This is, there's, there's a rule and there's a formula on how this goes. And I'm, I'm quite comfortable with this.
Well, I was, you know, I didn't think it was going the way we were talking last night, so.
Yeah, well, I, I think we, I mean, I, I, I'm not gonna kid you, I got caught up in it. I did. I, uh.
But yeah.
I, I, I'm a fan of, I know, I am. Uh, but on this one, I don't agree. And, um, you know, you said I'll get over it, which I thought was really, really neat. I gotta remember that because I have to do the same thing.
Well, I just.
And, uh.
I, I'll be honest with you, I.
I know you're.
I am can, completely confused with what was being presented, whether it's the three eighty-one that you're proposing right now, the three forty-nine for seven years that's in his request. The three fifty-six over ten years, which was our number, or three seventy-seven that is, is on here. So we have four different things that we're looking at.
Right.
That is confusing.
It, well, it's more clear now that we.
Well, but it shouldn't be that way. What I'm saying is, this got dropped in our lap at the last minute. No offense, Keith, but I mean, we gotta find a better way of doing this. This sucks.
Well, I think we are. I mean, we're kind of, we're, we're stubbing our toes as we go through this. This is what our second or third one, second one. You know, so, you know, it, it seemed to go, it seemed to go easier on the last one. This one definitely is a little jumbled up. And then, and then we start talking about, you know, that he's gonna go here, he's gonna go here. Well, we gotta remember that on the last project, that person was gonna not do this and stay in Wassa. So that same stuff was happening and we just kind of, kind of get past that and then decide on the formula and the rule of thumb and then move on. Steve had his hand up first, and then I'll go to Lauren.
I, I don't think, this is the fifth time I think I've seen this.
Yep.
I'm just saying that if they're buying land from us, we should look at it as the whole picture at one time. So instead of giving him concessions on, on the land that we're ignoring right now, kind of giving a week on the twenty-five thousand that we really don't know what the actual expenses are gonna be. We have a number of moving parts here that were really not coordinated very well in getting a clear picture of what we're doing. And I'm just saying that there's gotta be a better way of doing this than, than what we're doing because this, this isn't fair to, you know, Keith, you made a comment about that in your email about it, whether it's, you know, what staff is supposed to do. Well, this is frustrating for me to have to look at this five times and, and try to piece together. And I still don't know where all these numbers came from that we talked about, so, okay.
That's it, I'll get over it. I, Michael, I'm gonna call on you because the twenty-five thousand, does that seem realistic or is that over the top? Is that?
I actually.
My concern, is it enough?
Yeah, I actually think it might be low.
You think it's low? Okay.
To be perfectly honest, yeah, I, I think I estimated around thirty thousand.
Okay.
That's what he's asking.
But if he's asking for twenty-five and he's comfortable with that, I guess that's fine.
Well, I mean, it's owed to that, you know, it's, it's not a gift, it's owed. It should have been in there to buy that property, Lauren?
So at the meeting, I heard a lot of numbers being tossed around, like.
Bill there was a little. Yeah.
If, if you could, so three fifty-six, oh sixty-eight is what the village determined was equitable, correct?
That's what our formula, our twenty-five percent.
So in the three fifty-six, sixty-eight, we, we started taking deductions, correct?
Yes, we did.
So what, where did those deductions come from and how much were they?
Oh, basically.
Well, we.
We took out the.
Two hundred thousand dollars for utilities and land.
Right.
Did we do the same on the property before? I don't remember having that discussion. I don't remember having that discussion with the property before, saying we had this, we had this, we had this. What, what we started getting schooled on was we gotta get this reappraised and, and the, the property can't be going at this. So once some of the verbiage was done with Tommy Docs, it was kind of up in the air. Boom, we went in, did, we had a.
We reappraised it.
We, we had to reappraise, we took the number off, what, eleven thousand dollars, I think.
Right.
And, and now that's our new number, you know, so and, and I think we all feel pretty justified that that's a realistic number and it's, it's, it's a decent enough number that we can bring projects in too.
I think.
Does that help?
Um, actually not, but.
Ask again.
It's okay.
I won't answer this time. So, I mean, somebody else can.
So the, was it ninety thousand? It's, because I heard figures that at first, so we're, we're talking, we were back, we're down to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That we're gonna provide for. Actually, it's coming out of T I D funds, so it's not coming out of the tax general, the Tax Care General Fund. And I get the gist of this is that they, we're talking that we missed the twenty-five thousand dollar in the utility grant. Is that correct? If, if you were to revisit what your number was, yes, I guess that was not made clear whether you wanted to include that in any motion from Monday.
Okay.
Twenty-five thousand. So in essence, if we were to revisit this, which we can do, it would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand instead of a hundred and fifty thousand. Is that, do I have that right?
If, if we just correct the motion from Monday.
Correct.
I, I'm, I am gonna change my thoughts and I'm, I'm going with the three eighty-one oh six eight. Because that's the pay goal formula that we did the last time, and it's also consistent with what we should do the second time.
Okay, so my suggestion would be if that's going, if that's your route, you want to tow it, there should be a motion to rescind.
Yeah.
Action taken on that meeting. And the motion should be restated with whatever conditions that you want.
Did that three whatever include the twenty-five?
Yes. It's three fifty-six.
I just don't wanna go through it again.
Right, plus the twenty-five would, the grand total would be three eighty-one oh six eight.
I would.
A, a rescind is much easier than amending the original motion.
Right.
Which you can do, which is kind of a messy way.
I made the motion, so.
Uh, John's got a question here.
Okay, so we, we're still giving them a grant for the discount, so he's getting in the stuff at a discounted rate. So we still have two hundred thousand dollars sitting out there that we're just giving.
Which we did on the first one too.
Right, so we're just giving.
Well, I don't know if we're just giving.
How, how, I, that, that's what I'm not understanding. So now does this make it a five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars?
No, it, it, at that time, when we were negotiating with him, along with the first, the property next door to him, which is happens with the G D A, that number was twenty-four thousand dollars an acre. So now after the verbiage with Owen, we then went up to the thirty-three, thirty-four, whatever it is. And you can call it a discount, but that's what we were selling the land for. So, and then, then if, then we threw in the pond because nobody wants the pond. In fact, Jennifer even brought up that the pond actually pulls people away from that property and the liability. I don't want to put the words in your mouth, Jen, but you kind of said something.
Yeah, somebody was looking at it.
It is a liability.
It was. So, so I, I don't know if gift is the right word. And I think, I think some of us were troubled with him bringing up corona weather and bringing up marathon. I think we just have to look past that stuff. That's, if he does that, then he does it. Go ahead. And I think sometimes it, we bring that stuff up and it becomes personal. Uh, me included. I, I get very personal over this stuff.[1757.81] This, this, this is like my money, and it ain't my money. It's the community's money, and we want buildings and we want, you know, we want, uh, workers there, employees.
I think this is a good project for this, this parcel of land.
That building goes up, it'll be beautiful, right on that.
And I, and I, like I said, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with someone, um, trying to make not just do the minimum standard on the building and trying to make it so it looks nicer. It's right on the highway. I mean, it's a, it increases the tax on it. Um, so I just, I just think we, um.
It's gonna.
This, this whole thing was researched by a finance.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know enough about that detail about finance that I want to sit there and question their formula. And I, they feel it was justified, and I guess I would like to go with what.
Yeah, well, it's offered. We need a rescind, I think.
So, suggestion, Mr. Keith? So you can rescind the motion and actually you would take care of it by just adopting this resolution that's in the package.
Yes, you're correct.
I think Monday night, uh, everyone just got caught up in a little bit of the heat of the moment and, uh, some passions, uh, got stoked, uh, including my own. Um, but yeah, looking, looking at this and thinking it over the last couple of days, we, we should trust the process and trust, uh, the, and, uh, trust the recommendations. Regardless if this whole urban legend about the village being, being, uh, hard to deal with, uh, is true or not, uh.
It's a good thing.
Yep, depending on, depending on who you talk to. Um, I think that going against our own rules and our own processes does not exactly instill a lot of confidence.
Okay.
So just to be clear, we're gonna be paying them three hundred and eighty-one thousand sixty-eight dollars over a ten-year period? Is that correct?
Right.
Mm-hmm. And we only pay it if he makes the increment.
Correct.
So then it's, it's subject to the increment, and he's not able to question the increment.
Correct.
When our tax.
Right, what, what is that number, forty, um, what is that number, Keith?
Three hundred and eighty-one.
Yeah, but I mean, over the ten years. Yeah, yeah. Is it done yearly? We're gonna look at this and reevaluate?
So he'll, he'll get his, uh, assessment.
Mm-hmm.
And determine at that point what the increment is and.
And, and that's what we're doing with next door two?
Correct.
We're doing a pay as we go, it, it has to keep moving, okay, alright.
I like the pay as you go.
Yes.
I've always.
I think we all did, the, the last time around.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, when we would give out the money and then.
Yeah.
Nothing would happen, and what could you do?
It was something you could sink your teeth in, and then, and then Molly was here and you were not yet. So, anyway, okay.
I, I still think though.
Yeah.
John's looking at it very similar to me. I, I still think that in the future, if this comes up again, we need to, to either have somebody that's gonna be participating in receiving some of this money from us or not, and the, the value of the land is gonna be part of that equation or not. I, I really am uncomfortable that this is the fifth time I've looked at this thing. And, and we're ignoring the, the decrease in the, in value of the land. I don't care what we did with, with PGA, I don't care what we did across the street, I don't care about any of it. I'm just saying, there's a discount here that we're ignoring, and I think all of that needs to be part of the single request that we get to review in the future on any other properties. I'm just saying that from a housekeeping standpoint, this shouldn't happen.
Well, we, 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 we didn't reassess the land and then give it back to the discount. The original talks have always been that twenty thousand dollar per acre.
I'm saying, we have appraisal that says it's worth thirty-five, and I'm saying that, what I'm saying is, is that we knew that that value was on, and I'm just saying that in the future, I would rather have it, it, the sale price being a thirty-five, and I'll stick discounting it down to the twenty-four, the twenty, or whatever it, that figure comes down to, as opposed to having this trickle in and trickle in. Um, I am gonna be surprised if he doesn't come back and say, hey, it was thirty-seven thousand dollars, I want another twelve thousand dollars from us.
I, I, I would be just as surprised if it happens.
Okay.
And besides, once the deal's closed, it gets there, it's locked in.
Right.
I know, that doesn't mean he's not gonna stop.
Can I ask, well, can, can, just, just ask you for your, my own information here, and just so you know, I, after going through this with the attorney, we are to, we deduct the basier value of the, of the land from the increment, even though we were not paying tax. The, the terms of this agreement say this increment is reduced by whatever that land value would have set, would be assessed. So that, he does not benefit from that difference that way, I guess.
To pick up the difference.
That makes.
No, it doesn't.
Am I seeing it wrong?
No.
Am I understanding it incorrectly? Isn't that what you, but isn't that what you're saying? Cause you're, you're saying that he would claim the land is worth more than what.
I'm saying that we own the land that has a certain value that we know is thirty-five an acre. The, the sale price is being negotiated from something, I don't know how many months ago it was. And I understand that, that, did we have that, that number hard in our hand? Perhaps not. I'm just saying that we're ignoring that, that, that difference that we knew about that led to the, the appraisal that we got, right? We knew that there were some questions on value.
We didn't, right, we did not know what the value was.
Correct, we just know that there was a reason to get it appraised, right.
Right, exactly.
And right, and I'm saying that we're ignoring that part. I just hope that in the future, when this comes up, that, that we, we don't have the land purchase getting negotiated, the twenty-five thousand getting negotiated another time, and now the actual money's that we're giving them is, is the third thing that, that's. I'm just saying, it's dribbling in and that's not fair at all. I don't, I don't feel it's fair of me.
I don't disagree. I think it got backwards, there's no question. But we did agree to sell it to him at the twenty-five, and I guess that's where we're at, um, so, anyway.
Rock and roll, ready to go and re, uh, reconvene into open session? Wheel of Fortune is over, so, I missed that. Um, okay, wanna reconvene in open session? We have to reconvene?
Yep.
Move to reconvene by Barb, second by Feeny?
Okay.
We didn't emotionally go up?
That was.
That it? Alright, so we are back in open session?
Did you vote?
What?
We did not vote.
I, so I just asked.
No, there was a motion and.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, I'm sorry. I, I was looking more for the roll call. I need those thirty-four pages right here. I need to just.
By the way?
Flags.
With the siding?
I, I need to have a few flags on there and I'll be just fine, keep me a couple of years. Alright, wow, uh, let's see.
Okay, now what do we?
Uh, possible action on closed session items.
Motion.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, don't we have to move?
To rescind, the action taken.
Now, make a motion to rescind.
I thought you said if we just do that.
Adopted the resolution that would rescind the action.
No, no, you have to rescind.
Let's, let's move from the forest first. Do we have action on from the forest? It's, that's the order we're, here, so let's stay there. Do we have more negotiations here?
Yeah.
That, we need to do that.
Right, I think, I think what was discussed is that you would like to add language that the parcel will not be subdivided for the duration of the right of first refusal.
Correct, right.
If they agree to that, then you're willing to subordinate, uh, the villages' right to that right of first refusal to the banks.
Yep.
That's by.
I'll make a.
Not me. Uh, ma, uh, motion, what that was made into a motion by Ziegler?
So why don't we check with Sherry to see if she got that motion first? Sherry? Hello?
Sherry?
I got it.
Okay, you got it, thank you. Well, it's been recorded too. So we need a second? By Ermling? Uh, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, alright, one down. Uh, now, um, we need a motion.
I, I, yeah, I made the motion originally, so I, I made the motion.
Anybody can actually do it, but Barb, if you want to.
Yeah, make a motion to rescind the action second.
Alright, so, um, Ermling has made the motion to rescind, seconded by Ziegler. Anything on the discussion?
Make the, uh, the action taken on the board meeting concerning this issue?
Yes.
So we have a little clearer definition.
Two fifteen for Tommy docs, yep. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
So any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Now, um, proposed, uh, action, um, actually, we could, uh, if somebody wants to just do the proposed resolution, if that's your choice, that would then do the three fifty-six plus the twenty-five.
Um, I make a motion, second, I gotta find where it is.
Resolution number is, uh, be attached to your, um.
It's under, it's underneath the second bullet point on the bottom, or right in the middle, Barb, it's proposed resolution number two zero two one dash zero zero three.
Okay.
See it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three to provide tax increment finance assistance to Tommy Doc Products LLC for building and site approvals at eighty-six oh eight Progress Way.
Yeah, yeah. Motion by Ermling?
Second.
Second by Feeny, on the discussion.
And just, uh.
Yep.
Just so we're all clear, we're gonna have it in sequential order, so we know all the discounts where everything is the next time we have something come as a pay as you go.
Keith?
Have you got, we got that?
Yep. Yes, Keith?
Yes, again.
Okay, I don't think it's gonna happen because we're not gonna be, we won't be right in the middle of all this.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
I, I just want to make sure that we know.
You have a good point.
We know that it's there, I'm sorry.
Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Remarks from trustees, Lauren?
Nothing, thank you.
Ermling? Ziegler? Feeny? Yeah, you said your point, okay. Uh, nothing for me, other than, uh, next meeting is March fifteenth, six o'clock, and I won't be here, and, uh, our senior person is Barbara.